To the Eastern Board of Selectmen's meeting of May 13th, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America. Ends one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So please note that this meeting is being broadcast live and televised. It will also be on cable that you can look at on demand if you want to go back and check anything from the meeting. The first thing that we're going to do tonight is some liquor licenses. And we have a one-day liquor license for Stonehill College. The President's Dinner at the Sally Blair Sports Complex Fieldhouse, 320 Washington Street, Eastern. They've applied for a one-day all-alcohol liquor license for a President's Dinner to be held on May 30th, 2019, at the Sally Blair Sports Complex Fieldhouse, 320 Washington Street, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. An Eastern Police Detail is not required for this event. Somebody like to make a motion to approve the license?
So moved.
Second?
Craig then Tom, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, Eastern Rod and Gun Club. If you want to come up while I'm reading this. They're having their annual clam bake at 112 Howard Street, Eastern, Mass. The applicant Ben Salisbury applied for a one-day all-alcohol liquor license for an annual clam bake to be held on August 18th, 2019, at the Eastern Rod and Gun Club, 112 Howard Street. Southeastern from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. An Eastern Police Detail is not required for this event, so welcome back. We see you this time every year.
How are you doing? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
If you want to just introduce yourself and tell us about the event?
My name is Andrew Salisbury, 12th.
Sophia Way.
And I'm Ben Salisbury, 121 Central Street.
We have, I didn't know if there's a chicken barbecue one in there as well?
Yep, well, you can tell us about both of them, but we'll vote on them separately.
Perfect. So coming up in June on Father's Day, we have an annual chicken barbecue. It's a great place where all the members bring their kids and their families and a great family event. Good chicken every year and usually a good time had by the kids, too. And then every August, we do our annual clam and lobster boil. And it's also a good event, a lot of good food, definitely for the price of ticket, a big feed. You can eat clams and everything, so.
And it's open to the public?
If you find a member of the club, we sell tickets through the members.
Okay, excellent.
So we kind of, we sell them separately for each event. That way we don't get people overbuying or thinking they're buying for one event in June when the event's on to log it. But we release the tickets per event.
Sure, well, we hear great reviews of it every year, so. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve the license for August 18th for the annual clam bake from 12 to 6:00 p.m.?
So moved.
Second?
Craig then Chuck, all in favor? Unanimous. And then the next one is the chicken barbecue that's located at the same place but being held on June 16th, 2019, from 12 to 6:00. An Eastern Police Detail is not required for this event either.
So moved.
Second?
Craig then Tom, all in favor? Unanimous. Great, thank you so much and good luck on your event.
Thank you.
Next, we have Stone Soup LLC doing business as Langwater Farm Pizza Night, 209 Washington Street, Eastern. The applicant Kevin O'Dwyer applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for a pizza night to be held on May 24th, 2019, at Langwater Farm, 209 Washington Street, Eastern, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The rain date for this event is May 25th, 2019. An Eastern Police Detail is not required for this event.
Yes, is required.
That got changed, that was a typo?
There was change today. The Chief of Police had some discussion with the applicant today, so there's a swap of this license and the next one as well.
Yeah, great. So this next week from this coming Friday is the pizza night. We did three of them last year in September and October, and they were really successful. People love the pizza and we've been hard at work all winter, you know, perfecting our pizza recipe and adding some tweaks. And I think we have some good pizzas in store for people. We're going to do pea shoot and caramelized onion and spinach and green garlic. So it's going to be some tasty pizzas with farm-fresh toppings.
Terrific, and that pizza oven is portable, you take it around to different events?
We can move it around, right? Yeah, it's at least, you know, 1,500 pounds, but the tractor lifts it up and put it on a trailer or a truck and we can bring it around. So we've brought it down to Shovel Town this, a month or so ago. Yeah, it's a.
That's great.
Party machine.
And do people need tickets for this, or how does that work?
No tickets, so it starts at 4 o'clock, I believe. Listed.
Five.
Five, thank you. But folks can come a little before that and hang around on the picnic area, grab a seat at a picnic table and just first come, first served. No tickets needed.
Okay, great. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the license?
So moved.
Second?
Craig and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous. Great, and.
Thanks, guys.
Well, that's, so you're not doing the second one, that is?
I'll stick around and help promote the event.
So the next one is Shovel Town Brewery slash Langwater Farm, the Spring Festival Farm Festival, also at 209 Washington Street. The applicant Frank Altieri has applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for Langwater Farm Spring Farm Fest- Spring Festival Farm Festival to be held on June 1st, 2019, at Langwater Farm, 209 Washington Street, Eastern, from noon to 8:00 p.m. The rain date for this event is June 8th, 2019. A police detail is required for this one.
So this is the, our second annual event, or is it?
Third, third annual, yes.
Sorry, third annual event. Really great turnout the last couple of years. And people come and enjoy the farm. It's, you know, springtime at the farm, which everything's starting to bloom and the plants are coming up and the farm stand has all of its accoutrements, so it's really a good event. And we also have some music, which I think the entertainment license is next, or should be there somewhere.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah. And so we have some, a little bit of live music and games for the kids and food and Shovel Town beer.
Awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, that's been a fun event, too. We do, it's a free event, so all are welcome. And we do hayrides around the fields to sort of show what crops are coming up. There's a potting event or a planting event for the kids, several other things. We'll be making pizza and Condor, the farmer's daughter, will be there with some other food, too.
Oh, that's great.
Excellent.
Terrific.
Again, is there a fee of any kind?
It's a free event.
It's a free event, but you have to pay for the food and drink.
Sure.
Yeah.
Great. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second?
Chuck and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous. Great. You guys are still on the show tonight.
Do you want to make the entertainment license?
Yep.
There's that going out of order.
That's in the right, in the order. So the Shovel Town Brewery in Langwater Farm, once again, 209 Washington Street, Eastern, applying for a one-day entertainment license for Langwater Farm Spring Festival Farm Festival to be held on June 1st, 2019, 209 Washington Street, from noon to 8:00 p.m. The rain date for this is June 8th, 2019. And this will have a police detail following suit of the other one.
It's part of the other event.
So what kind of entertainment are you going to have?
Typically, we have a country acoustic act similar to the barn burners. We haven't actually asked them yet. We're hoping maybe they would be the ones that would show up.
They're pretty popular, they bring a big crowd.
Yeah, they do a great job, yeah. And they donate a lot of their time to the community events, too, so they're a good organization as well.
Great. Could, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Craig and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous. Great, and good luck with the event.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you guys for doing it. Next, we have a common virtual or license transfer. SMM Enterprise doing business as Slice of Greek to AVA Bauthaus doing business as Slice of Greek, 111 Belmont Street. Come on up. Go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us what you're going to be doing over there.
I'm sorry?
If you want to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about.
We want to keep everything is the same, the same menu. And we have extension hour for the student from the Stonehill College. We open Friday and Saturday to 3:00 in the morning. And the student is very, very happy about that. We want to keep the menu the same and everything is the same. We're not changing anything.
Okay. So you'll have to satisfy a pre-opening inspection requirements and obtain a food service permit with the Board of Health prior to opening?
What?
Have you talked about that?
Yes.
And all outstanding excise taxes must be paid in full prior to the opening?
Yeah.
All right, and if you have questions on that, Michael will be able to help you with that.
No, I don't have any question.
Okay, great. Would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Craig and Chuck, all in favor? Unanimous.
Good luck.
Good luck with your new venture.
I appreciate it.
Okay. We're going to skip down to the discussion and vote for cable television renewal license granted to Verizon from September 1st, 2019 to August 31st, 2024.
Sure, so I believe Paul Train is making his way to the table, representing Verizon as his special counsel for the town of Eastern, Bill Solomon, and Chair of the Cable Advisory Committee, Stu Schonfeld, is making his way up as well. So just a brief refresher for the board. I believe more than two years ago, in February or March 2017, the board appointed Bill Solomon a special counsel for cable license renewal in anticipation of this renewal process for both Verizon and Comcast. And we have been working along with Stu Schonfeld here, who is the Chair of the Town's Cable Advisory Committee, in earnest for effectively two years now, to work with Verizon and Comcast on this renewal process, including the earlier portion of it, which was the ascertainment process held publicly by the Cable Advisory Committee, where there was a lot of really good input and feedback, not just from E-Capitals, from a lot of residents in town. It was a really great process to hear what people were looking for out of these agreements moving into the future. And it's been a great process working with Bill and Stu and Paul. So there's a kind of key summary in your packet, as well as hard copies in front of you, of the proposed license with Verizon for the next five years. And I'd ask that Special Counsel Solomon just give a brief overview of that to the board.
Sure, thank you. It's good to be here again. Thank you, Board members. As Connor said, the license is for five years. Verizon sought a shorter license and in exchange for that, the town was able to receive certain benefits that balance that out, particularly in terms of funding on the capital side. So it's a five-year license. There is a provision that references the possibility of the town providing an agreement similar to a cable license, cable franchise, or a similar agreement to another video provider who uses the public way. And in the event that were to occur, and that's a more limited field, it's not just anyone, it's a similar agreement to a cable license or a cable franchise, then Verizon would have an opportunity to look at that and say, well, we think they have a better deal and negotiate with the town changes to this deal. If an agreement wasn't reached, then they would have their option, if they so chose, to withdraw from the license after three years from that point in time. It's a five-year license. I don't anticipate anything like that happening. Importantly, and I thank Paul and Verizon for this, we're able to reach an agreement on the wording of that provision that provided some protection to Verizon, but frankly, also kept this agreement focused on cable licensing and not other forms of video competition, which the town has less or little control over. Three standard definition peg access channels. And importantly for the town, one high-definition peg access channel after. I noticed from the town in 270 days, you know, from the hearing or from discussion, high-definition for peg access is a critical issue going forward. The picture quality, it really shouldn't be and can't be significantly degraded from that of the other channels. Otherwise, people will find it difficult to watch. We credit Comcast, Verizon, rather, for coming to the table on that issue and providing that channel. In a perfect world, we'd have three channels. Nothing prevents Verizon from looking at how this works and seeing they have a better cable system and deciding, you know, on, we like all those channels to be high-definition because we want people to watch peg access on cable. It's the fundamental source for that programming. So nothing precludes that going forward, but the requirement is only for one channel. The peg access support goes from 4% to 5%. I do a lot of number crunching, a lot of math in cable franchising. I have kids, I tell them proudly that I'm doing as much math as they are. And that actually allows me to really well represent a town. But I fully, fully admit that it was only fairly recently that I figured out, maybe with some help, that 4% to 5% is a 25% increase and not a 20% increase when you think of 80 versus 100. So that's to Verizon's credit. It accepted the town's need and interest in having that funding. As you know, you have a wonderful community television program, public educational and government. I have to say, I don't think I went to a more impressive public hearing on cable than was held here in Eastern two years ago, which spoke a lot about the community. The capital support worked out consistent with an approach that Verizon has taken with towns I work with, has two components. One component is a set dollar amount, 15,000 a year for five years for a total of $75,000. The second component is a percentage of their gross revenue. So on the peg operating to support the TV channels, 5% of gross revenues for the capital, in addition to the $15,000 a year, half a percent of gross revenue, also paid quarterly at the same time as the peg operating support. That dual approach, which was worked out, serves Verizon interest in a world where there's a lack of certainty going forward. And it provides some certainty for the town, together with a capital number that supports your needs going forward. Peg access cable casting, we'll continue to have Verizon pick up at the Peg Access Studio in Northeastern. As you know, pursuant to your last cable licenses, the town, actually, after your last cable licenses, the town built out a municipal fiber system, which you have your data and other information on. That also is the methodology by which community programming gets from your remote buildings to the studio, so Verizon can pick that up. That will continue. The listing of peg access channels on the Electronic Program Guide, that is, together with the peg access video on-demand, are two services where if Verizon provides that service elsewhere in the Commonwealth, they'll come to Eastern, talk about the possible, doing the technical and financial ability to do that here in Eastern. That's important, I think, for the town. It was not in the last license, but it's in this license because it provides both a reminder to the town and also provides a connection to Verizon if that, those services occur elsewhere. Video and Electronic Program Guide, as you know, is to put the programming listing on the electronic guide, so you could set it on your DVR or other equipment to tape, or you can just look and see when things are happening. That's an important part of cable now and going forward. And by having it here, it says to Verizon, we'd like to have that discussion when, if, and when Verizon implements that elsewhere. Cable service to public buildings, that would only be provided, that's currently not provided. It's provided by the other cable company. If requested by the town, that would be provided, but at this point in time, there may not be a need for a second set for that. And so all in all, actually, on the document itself, I thank Paul and his team for a long period of time, working that out together and applying that, I think, well-try, fair, licensed language here in Eastern, that Paul was instrumental in making sure that those rules of the game, which were applicable during the negotiation process, were implemented in Eastern. And for that, I thank him and his team for doing that. But for their making that case to Verizon, that it's not clear that we would have been able to sign today. We might have been in a disagreement, that was avoided, and I thank him for that. So all in all, it's a very strong license. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Stu, of course, is here to speak. I just want to say that we can't begin to thank Connor and Stu for their work. I used to say that if in Russia and Dostoevsky, you judge a society by its prisons, I judge a town administrator by how much work they do on a cable franchise. Because, you know, there's no great glory. There's one day, it's nice to know, and then back to the million of other issues. So Connor's work on this, coming in, beginning when he had his tenure, really reflects his dedication, hard work, thoughtfulness, negotiating skill, that were tremendous. And we would not have been able to achieve both of these licenses in the way we did without Connor's work. And I appreciate that. And Stu, he does this for a living. He doesn't have to go somewhere else to do it and not be paid, but he dedicates himself to the town of Eastern. His technical knowledge, his knowledge of operations was instrumental in addressing all these issues. And if you don't know Stu, he keeps you honest. So I thank both of those gentlemen, and their work was really very, very helpful, without which we could not have been here today.
Thank you. Paul, did you want to make any comments?
Yeah, I just want to echo Bill's sentiment in terms of Connor and Stu and the cooperation that we had. Bill referenced that we, you know, this is an evolving area of regulation and law. And all cable companies or providers are trying to adapt to a changing environment. Thus, the shorter term and some of the other references that Bill made. And it's evolving quickly where our client would have liked to add some additional language in the agreement, but Bill and Connor and Stu made a case that we were way down the road. We were close to an agreement and out of a sense of fairness and negotiating in good faith. I agreed with them and worked with our client, and Verizon was willing to do that without making further changes. So that's the reference Bill was making. But, you know, it was a pleasant process to work with Connor and Stu and Bill. And I'm glad we're here and I'm glad they brought the documents to be signed. Thank you.
Stu, did you want to comment?
The only thing I would echo is the same, which is a wholehearted thank you to Attorney Solomon, who's Special Cable Counsel, and Connor, who have been really instrumental, working together as a team. I also want to thank the other members of the Cable Advisory Committee who aren't here today, Harris Blumwog and Adam Crowley, who all have taken time out of their schedules to make this happen and to bring forth the best license for the town of Eastern.
And the excellence.
Thank you.
And it's all right. Also, we've had help with the ECAT, Eastern Community Access Television Director, Jason Daniels, who has helped us with an ascertainment process where a written document to support the needs of the community and to help get this best license for the community today.
Thank you very much. You know, our cable access is very important to the town. We pride ourselves on transparency, so to have all of our, so many of our government meetings broadcast, I'm always amazed at how many people watch all of these meetings. And they're important and there's a lot of information, there's a lot of choices out there. So when people take the time to watch one of our government meetings, I think that's terrific. I think that there's so many community events that are broadcast that people really care about. It's really a very strong means of communication for us. So thank you very much for all your work on that. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Just a couple of questions, I guess. We alluded to it loosely about the term being three years. And I noticed that we have another cable television renewal.
Five years, I'm sorry, five years, yes.
I'm sorry, in this case.
Five years with a possible, a theoretical possibility of being three, but no practical possibility. So for us, for almost 100% of purposes, a five-year license, yes.
Understood. If it was 100, loosely, if that was the case, 100%, I prefer not to see the 36-month in there. I just thought it was interesting that this was 36 months. I understand it's five-year, I guess, effectively. But 36 is in there for a reason. What was the discussion or why the reason? Because the comparison and contrast, whether five or three years we want to use is very different than the other cable television licenses that we'll have to look at.
A lot of it's, two things. It's based on, as I alluded to, that this is a changing industry. When we first signed this license 10 years ago, there wasn't Netflix, there wasn't all the other, Amazon, there weren't other ways to get video and deliver content to a home. So that's, and since then, there's been a lot of so-called cord cutters that are cutting the cord from cable companies, whether it be Comcast or Verizon or others. So Verizon's made the decision that they won't enter into any agreement longer than five years because that's about as far as they can see right now. And it's an evolving space, both from a regulatory standpoint and a legal standpoint as well, that there are things happening in DC and at the SEC that could impact this going forward. So that's one reason. The other reason is the difference between Comcast and Verizon is Verizon's what's known as a Title II provider. Essentially, it's a phone company to start with. So Verizon has the ability to be on your rights away without this cable agreement. It needs the cable agreement only to provide the cable service. That's different than Comcast, who needs the license to even build and get on your public rights away. So that's, so they may take a position and may, they'd be willing to go to 10 years because that's how they get access to it. If Verizon didn't renew this agreement in five years, its facilities would still have the ability to be on your poles and underground in the town.
Understood, thank you for that.
And I think, Tom, if I could clarify the delineation of a five-year and a three-year. A three-year is basically, and Bill corrected me wrong, a level playing field provision that that three-year termination notice would only come into play if the town granted an additional license to a new cable provider that was significantly less burdensome on that provider than on Verizon.
Thank you, I appreciate that nuance.
Yep.
Good, great explanation, yes. That's correct. And it was a way to work out a level playing field provision that worked for both parties, including, particularly the town. So it's, in its substance, the town's pleased. The fact that there's something there allows Verizon to say honestly that, well, there is some, there's a level playing field provision that is in the license, too. So great explanation, Connor.
Thank you all, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're looking for a vote to renew the proposed.
Dottie, because actually I have a specific proposed motion in the Administrator Notes, page four of the TA notes, page five of the packet. It's in italics, right above the 630, bold font.
There it is. Okay, so if somebody would like to make a motion to issue the cable television renewal license to Verizon New England Incorporated for a five-year term from September 1st, 2019 through August 31st, 2024, as agreed to by the parties and as presented to the board?
So moved.
Second?
Tom and Craig, all in favor? Unanimous. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your.
If you want to sign now, watching, so that Paul can take one original with him.
Sure.
If you want to just pass it down this way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. And Dottie, if you'd like, after that's signed, it'll be 6:30, we can do the Class II hearing.
Sure. When we finish signing.
Thank you, Paul. Bill, we need your signature on this last.
We need to get a copy of that before.
There's two, we'll keep one.
We'll keep one, okay.
This is, one original, Bill just needs to sign that.
That just goes with it.
Sorry, one moment. This is a second. It's for what Bill needs to sign, and we'll keep it. Thank you, Paul.
Great, thank you very much.
I'll be here for the next hearing.
At seven. Alrighty.
Thank you very much.
That'll be at seven.
Yes.
Thank you.
Stu, thank you.
Okay, Craig, if you want to read the hearing notice.
The Eastern Board of Selectmen as licensing authorities will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, May 13th, 2019, 6:30 PM, to consider and act upon an application for a transfer of a Class II license from Robert Lundin Doing Business Primary Auto to Camille Najjar Primary Auto LLC Doing Business as Primary Auto, 590 Turnpike Street, Easton, Mass., to engage in the principal business of buying or selling second-hand motor vehicles or parts thereof pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 140.
Want to give us a little background on this? Connor or Mike?
Sure, I can do that. So Mr. Najjar has been in, he is in the process of purchasing Primary Auto, 590 Turnpike Street, which is an existing used car sales and repair, has a two bay garage, I believe. Mr. Najjar would be taking over the operation and continuing as is. There is currently a 20-vehicle limit, 20 vehicles on display for the used car portion of the property, and I'd recommend that your vote would be contingent upon that same maximum, as well as Mr. Najjar providing the proper surety bond that's required by state law to hold a Class II license.
Okay, great.
Terrific. Excellent.
How long have you been in the business?
Actually, I worked in a dealer 15 years, and I'd done six years of different cars. I have experienced like 22, 23 years, like I'm a general tech. Usually I have to do safety inspection checkup before I put it on the lot, that's what I used to do in a dealer.
Oh, good.
So it's, I have a lot of license, state inspected and all, so any issue with the car, make sure to be, you know, qualified and happy under whatever required by law.
Great. Well, this is an opportunity to be on TV and tell people about what you're doing down there, so.
Thank you, thank you, yeah, a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge.
Hope the people will visit.
Yes, the town be benefit, and I be, you know, part of the town, it's my opportunities, and honest and straightforward, and do quality work, trained by dealers and.
Excellent.
Great, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else I need to consider on this?
Just a 20-car maximum on display and surety bond requirement.
Yes, Mr. Michael told me of this.
Okay. All right, would somebody like to make a motion to transfer the auto dealer Class II license from Robert Lundin Doing Business as Primary Auto to Camille Najjar?
So moved.
Second.
Craig Zenchuk, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Success.
Now we will go back to Action A.
Sure. So in your packet, there is an open meeting law complaint that was filed. The date on the complaint, just as a point of information, if I could pull it up, is listed relating to the April 8th Board of Selectmen's agenda, and the complaint is dated April 9th, which is as a point of information, we were not made aware of it until we received a phone call, I believe, a week ago, or specifically on May 3rd, from the Attorney General's Office inquiring as to our response to the complaint, which is required. So under the open meeting law, if you receive a complaint, which is a kind of prescriptive fillable form made available by the state, there's a couple of steps that a board or committee needs to take. That is that the public body has to meet and review that complaint within 14 business days, so that's, we're here tonight, we're able to do so. And that after that review, but within 14 business days, the public body must respond to that complaint in writing and send a copy to the Attorney General's Office regarding any action the body has taken to address the complaint, and you must send a copy of that to the complainant. So in the complaint that you have, specifically, the complaint is that the agenda for April 8th did not specify the names of the volunteers that were being considered for appointment to the Board of Registars and the Easton Shovlton Cultural District Management Partners So that complaint was reviewed by our office. We reviewed decisions that have been rendered by the Attorney General's Office on similar complaints of this type, and spoke about it with counsel, and prepared a draft response for the board's consideration, acknowledging that the board is well aware of the requirements of open meeting law to post agendas at least 48 hours in advance, not including Saturdays, Sundays, legal holidays, and that those notices must include a listing of topics that the chair reasonably anticipates will be discussed at the meeting, that those list of topics should have sufficient specificity to reasonably advise the public of the issues that you'll be discussing at your meeting. Further, that based on our research, that the board is, understands that the Attorney General's Division of Open Government generally considers a topic to be sufficiently specific when a reasonable member of the public would read the topic and understand the anticipated nature of the body's discussion. We, the agenda was clear that the board would be considering and making appointments to those committees. However, in our research, we have seen that the Division of Open Government from the AGO's Office has issued determinations that, including names of those volunteers, is their preferred practice, and so we would, of course, observe that moving forward, so.
Okay. So we're just going to send a letter back in response to this stating that in the future we will put the names of potential appointees for boards and committees on the agenda.
Yes, and one more nuance from the complaint form was a request that the board consider an open meeting law training that happened before we actually got a copy of this complaint. So obviously, the board can't do that. I do think it's important for the record to know that the board does self-host trainings. We actually just did one in the fall with Town Council. We take transparency very seriously, I think we try to be leaders in that regard, and so we'll continue to make sure that we implement best practices through those trainings, working with council, and, you know, treat this as a learning opportunity and incorporate it in there as well.
Sure. And the Mass Municipal Association has trainings on open meeting law, that I've been to many of them, I know that other members of the board have also, and some of the nuances of those change from time to time, so we always try to stay on top of that, so.
So if the board is willing, I would just ask that you vote to authorize Dottie as the chair to sign the proposed letter as a response.
Make a motion to acknowledge Dottie to sign this letter that's presented for the open meeting law complaint in response for the entire board.
Second.
So Tom and Mark, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next nomination of the town's representative to Old Colony Elder Services Board.
So we were sure to include the name on this item for Kathleen Govea each year. The Director of Health and Community Services requests that, oh, I'm sorry, I was mistaking this for the Animal Control Officer. This is a request from Old Colony Elder Services that the town make its nomination for Representative to the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors, and we are recommending that the town's outreach coordinator, who works under the umbrella of Health and Community Services, be reappointed as she is the current Old Colony Elder Services Board Director on behalf of Easton.
Okay, great. And her, the expiration for this nomination would be June 30th, 2020.
That's correct.
So would somebody like to make a motion to nominate, or to appoint Mrs. Govea with the term expiring June 30th to the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. All right, next, vote to award contract for Five Corners Phase Two sewer construction to C. Naughton Corp.
Good evening.
Hello?
Good evening, sir.
Dave Field, Director of Public Works. As you know, we recently opened bids on the Five Corners Phase Two Sewer Project. Those bids were opened April 11th. We received five bids for the project. The low bidder was C. Naughton from Bridgewater, Mass. The bid price was $9,392,240.50. Our consultant, Woodard and Curran, did an extensive reference check on C. Naughton. They found them to be the lowest responsible, responsive and eligible bidder, and they recommend award to C. Naughton. I also reviewed all those documents and their recommendations, and also concur with that award.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Dave, how does this fit in with the initial estimates that we may have had for this portion of the project in terms of the total appropriations?
Yeah, as far as the engineering, sorry, the construction cost, that engineering estimate was around 10 million, so the 9.3 million, you know, comes in slightly under that, which is, which is great.
Yep.
But again, that's, there's a lot of contingencies involved in construction, so I don't want to get too optimistic that we're way underbid here, but it's good that we're not overbid.
Fair enough start to the project, good.
It's the contingency that's built in. Is there a contingency that's built in to any of these bids?
To the bids themselves, no. So the bids themselves are strictly the unit quantities that we anticipate, and that's the, that's the price. Out of the project bids, so the 9.3 has no contingency on it, the overall appropriation includes contingency. We have items such as police details, construction administration, and then some general construction contingency in case there are changes.
So the unit schedule for change orders is actually this? There's no separate schedule?
Yeah, well, that's not change, that's items.
This is the project, right?
Yeah, exactly. So if they put in a linear foot of pipe, they get paid per that unit cost that they bid.
So was there a separate potential change order unit schedule put out there?
There are several different ways to handle change orders if they come up. Some are at unit price, just go ahead and do the extra work at the same unit price you've listed. Some are timing materials, some are lump sum. It really depends on what the issue is and how we want to attack it.
I was curious, because how much of that was considered versus the other companies that bid? I'm sure it was heavily considered, but, you know, oftentimes, change orders hit these jobs and people bury, and I'm sure you know.
Yep.
They inflate their unit costs and come in low, and then hit the change orders, and sometimes they're higher than the low, than the second lowest bidder or third.
Yeah, the unit costs generally stay the same. There's no change in unit costs. They may just ask for additional costs for other items that not necessarily in the contract.
Unforeseen, right.
Additional quantities, things like that. So as far as looking at the bids, that's apples to apples. Everyone has the same number of items and the same quantities, and they simply put the price they're willing to do the job at, and then the person with the lowest overall price is usually the low bid, and then we have to verify that they're responsible and responsive and eligible to do the work.
So Dave, just to clarify, for those of us who are not procurement specialists for a living, so what, what that functionally means is that, under public procurement law, which lays out a framework under which we have to bid and award these jobs, everyone is submitting basically bid tabulations that lay out in detail, and that's available here, what their unit costs for certain materials are, and that includes other things such as administration mobilization, things like that that come up with a bottom line number that, under procurement law, the town has a legal obligation to award the contractor what is called the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And what that means is not just, you know, I could have an LLC and submit a bid for a million, and therefore it's the lowest number, I get it, but that contract has to be thoroughly vetted by the town and its agents, in this case, Woodard and Curran, to determine responsive and responsible, which is looking at kind of the assets on hand of the company, reference checks, looking at work that they've done, have they done projects of similar scale and scope? Do we believe that they have the skill and the ability to do this job and deliver it? So that's an important piece, and as far as change orders and things like that, we use standardized language so that in a contract with the town, whether, regardless of who that low bidder is, they're submitting kind of bids for price consideration, they're not negotiating the change order language with us. It would be the same regardless of who the contract was awarded to.
Are there liquidated damages as part of that contract?
Yes, there is.
What are they?
Offhand, they're usually around $1,000 a day.
What's the end date?
Uh.
I'm sure you don't have it, but I'm just curious.
I don't have it offhand, but it's, it'll be next year.
Well, isn't it a specific number of days out?
There's a number of calendar days, I'm sorry, I don't have the actual.
If you give me one moment.
We haven't awarded the contract yet, the notice to proceed is.
If you give one moment, the notice.
That was 498, was that, was that, am I dreaming that up?
You're 400 and something, if, just one moment, please.
Yeah, we have a draft.
But there are, there are LTDs on there?
Yes.
$1,000 a day?
It's generally, I believe that's what it is, but I'd have to look at the contract. The contracts, as you can see, are right there, I can.
Yeah, no, that's why I didn't go over and get through it, I figured I'd ask you.
Mark, did you read us?
I have 10 minutes before the meeting.
For the rest of us that don't know what the LTD is, what is that particular aspect? LTDs, liquidated damages, so if a contractor does not finish the job at a specified time and date, every day after, they get charged with a fee for not living up to their end of the bargain, the contract. So do you normally get that on the end? Is there any incentive for them to finish early that comes with that?
The very, there's various ways to attack that, so like a Mass DOT accelerated bridge program, they actually have incentive payments for contractors to entice them to get it done because it's going to save the public a lot of headache and overall money. We don't have an incentive clause in these contracts, they're pretty standard.
Sure.
And we give the contractor what we believe is a fair amount of time to do the project. In this one, we specify that we want the Foundry Street corridor done this construction season, so that the contractor has to put the right capital and equipment into that project to get it done, so we don't have that detour going longer than it needs to be. We also have a water main to do on that with temporary water pipe that we don't want to freeze over the winter. So it's in the contract that he's got to get that section done, but as far as the overall contract days, it's a number we fix, so everyone has the same page.
Right.
They're not just going to hire one excavator and go out and do the whole project. They need to know how, how quick we need this done, so that's why we fix it, I believe, two construction seasons.
So specifically, the number of days to achieve substantial completion for all work except final paving on Foundry is 210. The number of days to achieve substantial completion for functional water and sewer systems is 420. The number of days to achieve readiness for final pavement is 480. And that will be from the date of execution, which will be from this week, roughly.
Yeah, so notice to proceed, I think we're going to have that the 15th is the date.
May 15th will be the notice to proceed if this is awarded.
One of the reasons why I asked that as well was because I think I read that their average project is around 3 million, so $9 million is three times larger than their average project, and to mobilize inside of a few weeks after you get the contract, I mean, everybody faces this, but that to me tells me they're going to be dedicating a lot of equipment, a lot of manpower, and I hope they have that planned, that they have a project three times the size of what their average project is, and the equipment that's probably sitting on another job is going to have to be moved to this job.
So a couple of things there. One, under the process that we have to follow, they, C. Naughton is not kind of sitting in the dark waiting for this. They were given a notice of intent to award weeks ago so that they could begin to start dealing with not only the voluminous paperwork, but mobilization efforts. That is obviously one of the things that we looked at very, very closely with DPW and Woodard and Curran was the scale of the project, and Dave, can you just speak a little bit to that? Because that's, they will be committing a substantial amount of their assets, and we did get into the detail of looking at the assets they have on hand, things of that nature, make sure that they do, they can mobilize for this scale.
Speaking in broad terms, we did, you know, Woodard and Curran did reach out to speak with them to find out specifically, because, you know, I think their largest project they gave us reference for is about $3.5 million. They have generally about six crews that'll be working on various projects throughout the year. We know at least two of those crews that we dedicated here in Easton. As far as the, the items that they've done are all similar in size and scope as far as individual items like deep sewer, water main.
Just longer.
Stream crossings, things like that, just more of it. So, you know, that's the one thing we wanted to make sure that they had the capital and the assets necessary to prosecute this job, and from what we found out, they do. And they're willing to put that on our project.
Where's the laydown area?
That hasn't been determined. The contractor has to supply their own.
Get you.
Yeah. So those are all items that will be, be coming out as we move through pre-construction meeting. We're also going to be.
Very quickly, yeah.
We're also going to be hosting a public meeting for residents and motorists that are interested about the project and find out what the impact's going to be during construction. And that'll be announced once we nail down that date, probably later in May or June.
Excellent.
Anybody else? Okay, well, I will entertain a motion to vote to award the contract for the Five Corners Sewer Phase Two construction to C. Naughton Corp. in the amount of $9,392,241.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you. Let's see, what can we do?
What time is it?
Yeah.
How about the warrant, oh no.
Just one moment, let me, too many documents open.
Do, hold on a minute.
We could do the solar, you could do the minutes, and the, we can just do all the warrants. Yeah, why don't we do the solar article, and then the minutes, and then the seven o'clock, and then executive session?
Okay.
So, Article 12 in the final warrant, that is in your packet, this is actually an article the selectmen have reviewed already and voted to include, and in doing our normal due diligence and checking on ensuring that we have requested votes of every item, we realize that we did not request the recommendation of the selectmen at that time because the dollars and cents were coming in that day. This has since been reviewed by the finance committee, they have voted to recommend it. This is a tax agreement with Eastman Street Solar, which is a large-scale mounted solar, not, we updated that not to say ground-mounted. And it will generate $42,542, or really $42,543 in new growth during fiscal year 2021. It'll pay a total of $329,000 and change to the town over 20 years. Again, finance committee has voted recommend, I recommend your recommendation. That will not make it into the printed warrant, but it'll be, you will be able to announce that from the floor of town meeting if you so choose.
Any questions?
None.
Would somebody like to make a motion to recommend Article 12?
So moved.
Second?
Craig and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous.
Great, thank you.
How about the minutes?
Sure.
Has the board had the time to review the minutes from February 11th, 2019?
We have. Can we, I've read them all, can we accept them all if there are no questions or issues?
You can make a motion to approve the minutes as a slate, if you would like.
There was one, trying to remember where exactly it was. It was a mistake. I thought there was a mistake in...
We can't get to our next part of the meeting until 7:00. I was trying to slow it down a little, Tom, but if you want to do it as a slate...
I would welcome to be less productive and a little more inefficient and go through all the minutes originally.
Triggered a little bit, but...
Craig, you had a question on one of them?
Yeah, but now I can't find it. It was a statement of something being 3 million, 3 million times more, I thought it was just three times more.
Is it, do you remember, was it a number or was it three? I can search the document.
It was a statement, I can't remember.
Oh, I see it.
Okay. What day?
Good catch, that is page three.
Which date?
I'm looking, it is page three of the minutes from February 11. So we will make, the board could make a motion to approve the minutes from February 11, revising 3 million to 3 on the February...
I see it at the bottom.
...11, 2019 minutes.
Good catch, Craig.
Well done, sir.
We're testing you.
I make a motion to accept the February 11 meeting minutes as presented with a change on page three, removing the reference from 3 million times the amount to 3 times the amount.
Great, thank you, Craig.
Somebody like to second?
Second that.
So that's Tom and Craig, all in favor? Unanimous. For the February 25 meeting minutes. Mark, you did raise your hand on that, didn't you?
I did not.
You did not, okay. I'm sorry, then it's not unanimous, Mark.
Obstained.
Obstained.
Yeah.
Just one moment.
Great, for the February 25 minutes, would somebody like to make a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second?
Craig and Tom, all in favor? Four of us, yes, and Mark abstained. March 25 minutes.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes dated March 25, 2019, as is?
So moved, second, I'm sorry.
Tom and Craig, all in favor? Four of us, yes, and Mark abstained, March 27.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes dated March 27, 2019, as is?
Tom and Craig, all in favor? Four and Mark abstained, and April 4?
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes dated April 4, 2019, as is?
Second.
Tom and Craig, all in favor? And that's, again, four and Mark abstaining.
Dottie, rather than sitting for four minutes, we could take a three-minute recess and come back at 7:00 and take care of that last open session, or the timed item, if you would like.
Sure, why don't we do that? We'll take a recess for three minutes.
Thank you.
Be back at 7:00. We are going to be hearing a discussion and vote for a cable television renewal license granted to Comcast Cable Communications Management, LLC, from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2029.
Sure, so again, same similar summary, this is the second of two cable licenses that Stu, Bill and I, along with Kathy from Comcast and members of the community have been working on for over two years in earnest. You have another kind of bullet point summary provided by Special Counsel Solomon that he's going to talk you through to give you kind of a key points of the Comcast proposed renewal license.
Thank you. Thank you again. Okay, as indicated, this is a 10-year license, July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2029. Cable service availability is to make itself available through Comcast to all residents of the community. That is what you currently have, which is great, a lot of times when you get away from cities, that there are density requirements, and in modern day, that's a big deal, because if you have density requirement of 30, 60 homes per mile, that means that a cable company does not really have to build unless they want to, and you'll have two classes of residents, and particularly important because it's cable and Intranet, so to the credit of Comcast, they make their service and will continue to to all residents of the community, even places that are not yet built. Standard drop installation is 150 feet from the street to where the house is, that means that if you get it installed, there's a standard price, and I'm not sure what it's now, 50, 60, 40 dollars. That's somewhat above where some communities are, which is a benefit. Peg access support goes from the 4% discussed to 5%. We appreciate Comcast, through Kathy, really looking at and listening to the needs of the Eastern community in cable. Kathy was at and actively listening at the excellent public hearing that you had, and then through negotiations, Connor and Stu were able to provide backup support for the operating and capital needs, again, as mentioned by Stu, Jason Daniels of ECAT did a tremendous job in showing where access has been in Easton, where it is and where it would like to go. The capital funding is $300,000. The upfront payment is $225,000, followed by five payments of $15,000. Larger amount upfront is very important because there are significant capital needs that are now present, and the ability to go out and get some packages, better pricing, and to have that in place is important, and Kathy worked with the town to have the funding upfront, which is something that is becoming less common based on cable companies' preferred payment over 10 years. So we appreciate that, her efforts and Comcast in that regard. Continuation of three peg access channels with an additional one, high-definition channel made available within 36 months of the effective date of the license. That's the outside date, excuse me, sorry, that's the outside date, and that could obviously be sooner, Kathy knows better than we do, that there are capital plans and things happen, so it may be sooner. We hope it is, but if not, it'll be within 36 months. Together with that, Comcast is also putting in serial digital interface, which is a step below HD for the existing three peg access channels, that'll have better sound and video quality, and that'll be needed to provide the high definition. That was highly negotiated by both parties, it's a changing field, so it was a changing target, but again, giving Ms. Maloney, I didn't call Kathy, but Ms. Maloney credit, that we worked long and hard, as our team and Kathy, to figure out, how can we get these benefits and at the same time meet some of the Comcast needs, and the balance was that there'll be a $15,000 payment for those encoders and other equipment, which is less than half the cost, and that not only will you have HD, but the other channels will have higher quality going forward. Cable service to public buildings, the license lists the buildings, customer service office, there was a language that basically allowed either customer service office or alternative means for Comcast to meet the needs apart from a customer service office. Going forward, we continue to have the FCC regulation as part of our license, and that provides that there needs to be an office that's reasonably convenient to Easton, and that's not only the FCC requirement, but because it's incorporated by reference in the, this license, it's something that can be enforced by the town if that were not continued. So, and finally, there's a senior discount letter, again, thanks to Comcast and Kathy, that letter, while like all senior discounts from Comcast and really every cable company, is based on financial qualification, we're able to get a broader scope of financially qualifying circumstances to include, for instance, mass fuel assistance, and to include the state payment program, which is based on income and assets, there'll be a number of folks in Easton who qualify for that, so it's not just social security or Medicaid, which, you know, can be smaller groups and people just don't have the ability to apply for, and so with that, it's a limited discount, they could always make it better if they want, but it's $2 off basic, and not every town has that, you would continue with it with a broader categories of qualifications. So all in all, on the language of the license itself, on policy issues, public way, right of way, legal protection, it's an excellent license that protects the town going forward, and we believe it's a strong license with respect to the 25% increase in peg access support and operating support, and the capital of $300,000, most of which is paid in year one. So if there are any questions, I've had to answer, I know Stu probably has a few words to say.
Stu Schoenfeld, Chairman of the Eastern Cable Advisory Committee, I just want to also thank Special Cable Counsel Attorney Bill Solomon and Town Administrator Connor Reed for negotiating the best contract for the town with Comcast. And this renewal license going forward will continue to help fund ECAT, Eastern Community Access Television, and all their great work you see on the town cable channels where this meeting tonight is covered. A special thank you to Jason Daniels of ECAT, who's the Executive Director there and all his hard work, and his staff, Jonathan, Lisa, and all the rest, and the volunteers to help bring programs like this and others to the Eastern residents. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Would you like to make any comments?
No, just to thank you to everyone involved, Connor and Stu and Bill, it was certainly hard fought in some cases, but very pleasant also, a highly respectful process, I enjoyed it, and I have a long history with this town, went to school in town, and grew up in a adjoining town, have a lot of love for this town, and have been here before for renewals, so I'm happy to have been able to do it again with a fine team that you have representing the town.
Well, I think that's, you know, it's a good sign when there's a negotiation and both sides feel, you know, happy that they've gotten a good faith deal on, you know...
both sides feel, you know, happy that they've gotten a good faith deal on, you know, across the board. So I really appreciate, it looks like it's simple when it comes down to these, you know, free bullet points, but I know from the public meetings that you've had all the way through. This has been a long time coming. It's a lot of work, a lot of people involved. So thank you to everybody, including the people from the public who took the time to go out and attend these meetings and let you know where their concerns and what they valued about the access, so.
And I just also want to thank the other two members of the Cable Advisory Committee that could be here tonight, Harris Blumwold and Adam Crowley. So thank you for your service.
Any questions from the board?
Just two comments. One, definitely appreciate the inclusion of the high definition aspect on both contracts. I think it's important for us to engage the community in ways that they wish to be engaged and help them get involved in the goings on of the town. And I echo the comments of I hope it becomes a long time before 36 months so we can get the benefit of high definition access before then. And I do want to just call out in a sense of appreciation for the senior discount side letter. I think it's important whenever we can address some needs from those in our community that especially may be susceptible to changes, I guess, in economic circumstances. So I applaud that in this case we are giving them access or information about some programs that they can avail themselves of. So I appreciate that. It's good to see wherever we can do that for all our audiences that may have some needs. So thank you for that.
There are two motions in this case. One is pertinent to the 10-year license itself. The other is an acknowledgement of the senior discount letter that we have described. That's on page five.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to issue the cable television renewal license to Comcast Cable Communications Management, LLC for a 10-year term from July 1st, 2019 through July 30th, 2029, June 30th, I'm sorry, 2029, as agreed to by the parties and as presented to the board.
So moved. Second?
Craig and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous. And also entertain a motion to acknowledge the senior discount side letter from Comcast to the town dated July 1st, 2019 and the letter from the town to Comcast regarding the possible waiver going forward of the requirement for Comcast to provide cable service to public buildings.
So moved. Second?
Craig and Chuck, all in favor? Unanimous.
And thank you, sir. I just, in the hallway, I wanted a chance to speak to Kathy. We're busy with everything else. We today, Connor and I drafted his letter, doesn't require acceptance by Comcast. And as discussed previously, thank you very much, this is previously, all it says is that if going forward, the Comcast were to charge or more accurately in this case, count the free service to public buildings as part of the franchise fee, thereby affecting your franchise fee, that the town is saying from its perspective that it would let Comcast know that at that point may have to consider requesting the service to be ended or directing the service to be ended. That requires both a change of federal law and regulation. It requires both that law, that sort of regulation more aptly being not stayed or not overturned. And there's certainly no guarantee that Comcast would start counting that value of that cable service to your public buildings against the franchise fee. They pay you. They haven't done that in 30, 40 years. Initially, when cable companies came to town, they said, well, please let us in your public way. One of the things we can do for you is provide free service. The state law requires it to be free. It's a little different than the idea of free. This is whether it counts against this franchise fee. And out of respect for Kathy and Comcast, who prefer that that not be addressed in the cable license, since it's a hypothetical and Comcast doesn't know what will happen or what it would do if there's a change in regulation, we just indicated that the town would send a letter in stating that if in the future that the value of this service was counted against the franchise fee, the town would have to consider whether or not that was something that was a good value or affordable. So that's what the letter does and I apologize for Kathy. We just finalized it today for not providing it. It's not consented to by Comcast. And final point is being that if, again, this likely might not happen, but partly because I don't believe Comcast will want to be deducting the value of that service from your franchise fee, then the regulation might happen, but I think Comcast is not the one who's pushing that regulation. That if it did happen at one point and the town wanted to say, well, you're saying the market value of that service is $3,000 a month and, boy, that's a lot of money to pay for that. We don't think that that's a good value for us. We wouldn't want Comcast to say, well, you required that in the license and now you're saying you don't want it. So we're just setting a marker to say, you know, we indicated at the time that if you were to change your approach, we reserve the right to rethink whether or not that service is something we want. In effect, saying we should certainly have the choice whether to take a service that you've decided to charge us for in the future, when we didn't know what that charge would be, we want to let you know that we might say, well, thank you, but we're not interested in that service. We like that service. It provides cable TV to your students, the Discovery Channel, the History Channel. It provides channels that are important to emergencies for public works and for town hall. So they are of value, but without knowing what, you could be charged for that, we wanted to say we reserve the right to rethink it. So thank you and I apologize that we didn't get that finalized until today, but we had talked about it, so thank you.
Do we need to vote on that letter or?
It was part of your second motion, so you were.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right, let me sign this and Kathy, you can take one. Actually.
Kathy, I'm actually going to give both originals to you once you'll send one back. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stu. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks to the team as well.
So next up, we're going to go into executive session under purpose three of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares to discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining with the Eastern Police Supervisors Association, Eastern Patrol Officers Association and SPEA Dispatch Unit. We're going to go into executive session to return to open session. So this will be a roll call vote. We'll take a motion and a second and then you would say, you would start on your end by saying, Mark, yes, so.
So moved.
Second?
So that's Craig and Tom.
Lamb, yes.
Lamb, yes. We saw, yes.
Barger, yes.
Full Janetti, yes.
King, yes.
Great, we are back. And I will just note that in our executive session, we voted to ratify the Eastern Police Supervisory Officers Association contract and also the dispatcher's contract. So we've ratified both of those contracts. So at this time, I would take a motion to include and recommend Article 10, which is to approve funding for the Eastern Police Supervisory Officers Association contract.
So moved.
Second?
So that's Craig and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous. For Article 11, to include and recommend approved funding for the dispatcher's contract?
So moved.
Second?
Craig and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous. And we already did the solar. Am I missing anything on here?
I've got everything checked off on mine.
You are not, and I actually, I apologize, I'll just clarify your motions that you did vote to include these articles already by virtue of them being warranted, so.
You don't have your, he's saying he can't hear. Did you not turn it on?
It's on.
Mine's on.
Okay.
Share up.
Is that better, Wayne?
There we go.
We assume no point. Great. This is good, we should do all of our yes, nos of traffic lights. I just want to clarify and ask the board to take a revised motion for Article 10. Articles 10 and 11 were already included, that's my mistake, so the motion needs to only just be a recommendation.
Make a motion to recommend Article 10 to approve funding for Eastern Police Supervisory Officers Association contract.
Second.
That's Tom and Craig, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Make a motion to recommend Article 11, approve funding for dispatcher's contract.
Second.
Tom and Craig, all in favor? Unanimous.
Great.
Okay.
Okay.
Any town administrator notes?
None prepared.
The Leckmans' notes? I guess I will just remind everybody that town meeting is coming up on May 20th at 7:00 PM. There will be babysitting available, but it's not through the town, it's through some volunteers, Oliver Ames students that are volunteering. I don't have all the details of it, but there is supervision, of course. Drop-off is at 6:30, and I'm trying to see if I can get to this. Pickup is at 10:00 PM. There's a sign-up sheet. If anybody is interested in the babysitting and they want to send an email to me, just because I don't have all the details right now, I'm happy to make a connection with you two, the group that's doing the babysitting. And we want to thank the OA students for offering this to help town meeting, you know, run smoothly so that more people can come out to that, we really appreciate that. And get there early, because we can't start until we have a quorum, so there's a lot of stuff on the agenda this year, and we expect a big crowd. It starts at 7:00, and sometimes we have to wait because there's people out in the hallway, so I'd encourage people to get there early.
Right. Yeah, if everyone shows up right at 7:00, there's only so many folks to do voter check-in, so it can kind of slow that down a bit, so I agree, showing up early is fantastic.
All right, well, thank you very much, everyone, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any press notes?
Second, on you.
No press notes, okay.
So that's Craig and Chuck, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.